Let's call the meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We shower blessings on our first responders and our military at home and abroad. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? We have one from Lou Boudreau. I think he must have stepped out. Is he outside? Oh wait, that was, I thought that was. Alright, any other public comments? You're up, Mr. Boudreau. You're here just in time.
You hit the podium, sir.
Ready? Okay. For those who don't know me, Lou Boudreau.
Hi, how you doing?
Anyway, I don't know if this information is correct, but it's something that worries me a lot. And that is, there's some plans, some people have mentioned some plans, that when they get control of the city or the council, that they will remove the emergency services, emergency men. Something that we've worked all for years to put in. Something that all cities use and is very needed. Now, the problem is, you know, where I live on Barns Road, we are five hundred, the year five hundred level. You all, and where you live, is the one hundred. You get flooded fairly often. Now, the only time, there's a possibility we were gonna flood, and I live on that, on Barns Road, and when the flood happened in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, they had that problem. We had, there was a chance, and the government told us, the place told us, that we could probably gonna flood here. And we moved everything from here over to Folscher, where we had our meetings there. Two or three times a day. So, somebody else's idea, if it's true, somebody else's idea, that they don't like it. So they wanna do it. They wanna knock it out. That's fine if you live on Barns Road, but it's not good if you live in where you live. And I think that's a terrible thing. I'll tell you just a little bit about this. I didn't create all things. I was involved in it. I moved here in two thousand. When I had my house, right there on Barns Road. And so, nice piece of property, cleaned it up, built a house. And I was asked by the mayor then, Jim, what's his name? Anyway, he came by and asked me, do I wanna be on council? I said, I'm never, I'm never involved in politics before. I really don't know. But if you have something, doing evidence and things, you know, I'll try and see what I can do. For six years, for six years, that's what I did before I became a mayor. I'll tell ya, I didn't wanna be a mayor, but I'll go all the way back. The other thing is, when I had a lot of it, I was in, I was in heaven, I had been in Germany. And then I saw, just visiting friends and my wife's company. Anyway, I was there, and I saw what the Germans did. How they had all over Germany. They, they, they had same things for firemen, they had same things for policemen and so forth. They used the same kind of equipment. So if something happened over here and they don't have enough people, they'd send them over and take care of it. You know, that's how they had it. That's what the United States decided to do. And I heard about that. And so Doug Savasola was the mayor at the time. And I said, you know, they're not gonna hit any bombs or planes like they did in New York on other places. But, you know, we've been dealing with floods, and we need to know something about this. Is it okay if I go to the county and go where they were doing it and starting it? Can I get some information? And they said, sure, and the county said, yes. And so I went, and that was one of the great, greatest surprise I ever had. Well, those people, how dedicated they were. And I told them what we're trying to do, I don't know how to do it. And they said, just call us up, we'll come. And they did. And so Sandy, can't remember her last name, she was one of the people on the county, on, you know, who dedicated that, working on that. And so she, we put together all the information and she made a book. And so that's how it all started. And now, there's no reason about money, because everybody, everybody had dedicated to it. They were doing free. Now, we did have some equipment we needed, some small, some small computers. And of course, we had to have, you know, radios and things. But we got it from the government. There's no money involved in that. So why, anyway, so I'm warning all you who live there, be careful. Be careful wanting to push that. That was the only word, couple of words, I'm pretty sure it was accurate, though. And so, you all who live there, in Valley Lodge, if that really tries to push, it's a problem for you. So, anyway, that's where it is. And when I did become mayor, well, Doug had a business, and he couldn't work anymore to do that in timing. And so Jim and Doug said, you come to your mayor, take your mayor. And I said, look, here's what I'll do. I don't know all the political stuff. So what I'll ask you to do, Jim had retired from here. Said, Jim, you come work on council. Doug, will you be able to work on council?
Yes.
That's two. Peggy Wright, Peggy Wright had worked twenty years before that, and she came. And I forgot one or two other that came. And so they did it all to help. And so we, I went to FEMA and said, we need some equipment. FEMA gave us the money, and we designed and worked with them, because both Jim and, and, oh, yeah. Anyway, real nice guy, he's passed away, just like Jim, but anyway. Both of them had worked on these kind of machines. And we worked with the company, and we put the design together. We're carrying them on wheels, and the gasoline, gasoline, not gasoline, diesel. The diesel was underneath, and we put those things. And it was paid by FEMA. FEMA says, you're gonna take care of them, but remember, they belong to us. And anytime there's something nearby, in any counties or anything, that needs something like that, and you all are not using yours, you gotta let them have it. And so then, after that, what you see about the gates, said the same thing. They'll give us the money for that. So I asked, I asked the commissioner of Rowan Bridge, I said, give me the name of some engineer that develops that sort of thing. And he said, you got the money, we'll build it for you. And so that, and we got, and it devised out here that when the power goes out, we got that, you know, thing. I didn't do that myself. I'm not a real smart guy, you know? But there are nice people there, and they were very honest to do it, and we worked hard. Sometimes we had disagreements. But you know, we never had the kind of fighting and screaming that I saw two months ago when they had a meeting here. That was disgraceful. You know, if you really, if there's something wrong, if someone sees something wrong, and something just different than someone else, we should have freedom of speech. Not what's happening in our country. You know, what you got woke stuff. You know, what you do is you sit down and talk. You got one idea, I got another idea, but let's talk about it. That's where you can get things great. That's when you think, that's when you, that's when you sit and develop something. Not always other BS. So, that's my stupid self, but that's what I have to say.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
I'm gonna sit by you. I'm gonna talk to you later. I'm gonna tell you.
Okay.
He's the guy that got me a piece of property where I was. So thank you for that.
Good job. Alright, moving on to item four. Consider and take action on the consent agenda.
I'm making a motion to permit.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, new business? Consider and take action to accept proclamation of April twenty twenty-three as Fair Housing Month. Is Jennifer gonna read that proclamation?
Proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April twenty twenty-three. Whereas Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it as a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for how fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the national fair housing law during the month of April provides an opportunity for Americans to recognize the complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, I, Lori Boudreau, Mayor of City of Simonton, Texas, proclaim April two thousand twenty-three a fair housing month in Simonton, Texas. And hereby urge the citizens of Simonton to become aware and support the fair housing law. And witness thereof, I have affixed my signature and seal on this eighteenth day of April twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
No second?
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item B, consider and take action to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four to deny center point energy increase in rate.
Resolution number two zero two three dash zero four, a resolution of the City of Simonton, Texas. The city finding the Center Point Energy Houston Electric LLCs, the company application for approval to amend its discrimination cost recovery factor pursuant to sixteen ten Administrative Code two five point two four three. To increase distribution rates within the city should be not, should be denied. Finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, consider and take action to appoint Justin Boudreau to the Economic Development Corporation A four. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, consider and take action to approve bid for recodification services to recodify our existing city ordinances. This is an item we've discussed previously. It's part of our upcoming comprehensive plan, thank you. It's also something that should be done every five years. We've gone back at least seven years and have not found where it's been recodified. It's time to do that. Some of the other elements that we've discussed before, about Franklin particularly versus Munich Code, which are the two quotes that you see in your book and your supporting documents. Munich Code prices are gonna go up, they're changing their rate table. So it'll be about four thousand dollars more in Franklin. Munich Code's very slow. They're about three years behind in updates when we submit. They are difficult to get updates done, even when they're not behind, because they only wanna do it once a year. Whereas Franklin will do updates for us immediately, as soon as they're submitted. They're twenty-four hour. It's a twenty-four hour system. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? I'll add, since we've got folks here, that this is eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars is Franklin. That you're, that we're authorizing for our initial investment.
And we also included in Munich Code in there, just for transparency purposes, their recodification process is fourteen thousand, so it's significantly less. But you'll see the deliverables with Franklin are about double what we get from Munich Code. The legal fees and codification are all included in one price, whereas Munich Code is two separate services. And then there's additional hours that could potentially be added on with legal services. Franklin is a twenty-four hour company, they have outreach points twenty-four seven. They also guarantee that if we submit something, like if we change an ordinance, add ordinance, let's say Erica submits it after council, which is not likely, but hypothetically, were to submit it after council, they guarantee that within an hour it will be uploaded to the website. So, like I said, with Munich Code, we are still waiting for updates to be updated that we submitted two years ago. So this is quite far. Being very helpful. Any further discussion?
Will this, will there be major changes to the way that we deal with the codification now?
No, I mean, like, the process of codification is, is pretty much the same. So they have given us sixty days for a transfer, to transfer all of our information from Munich Code to Franklin. Now, the actual interface on the website looks a little bit different, but that's like going from one website to the other. It's a little bit different. The thing that we like about Franklin is it's got some Google Analytics embedded in it. So we have the ability to set up some different filters on it, on how we can search and find stuff. Where there's also an element to where the public can sign up for emails. If we update ordinances or ordinances are updated, they can sign up for email notifications, so they will be notified, hey, the City of Simonton has updated whatever ordinance. Which is, is helpful, especially for building code. We have a lot of contractors that call in pretty frequently, have you updated? Cities usually do not adopt the most current building code. It's usually a year or two years prior or previous. So we do have a lot of contractors who stay in contact with, have you updated building codes? What does that look like? So that's very helpful. I think the biggest thing is, it will look a little bit different. Now, the whole recodification period takes about ten months. Because they go through, and they go through every single ordinance, they look for chromatical mistakes. They look for things that could have possibly been entered in incorrectly. For instance, Munich Code, the last time they uploaded our ordinances, we happened to be looking back through it and noticed that in one of the sections with floodplain, they referenced twelve inches when it should have been twelve feet. So they will actually, Franklin will catch a lot of that stuff. But then they also cross-reference and layer with state and federal legislation, because as you know, that changes every two years, and sometimes that can change local ordinance. And maybe it's something that we don't deal with every single day, so it slips through the cracks. They will, they will let us know, hey, this, this federal legislation has passed and it affects your local ordinance, so the federal will supersede that, that local ordinance, and it will, it will replace it. So it's extremely helpful, it's very efficient. It's very user-friendly for the outside person to go to the website and search for whatever it is they're, they're looking for, and then also be able to update it.
I have one more question. Would it be beneficial at all to wait until later into the comprehensive plan? Or would that, to know more of what we would want in the future? Or is that something?
That's a good question. It has to be done regardless. It's recommended that we do it every five years, mainly because of, like I said, those state and federal updates. Most cities you see do it every three to five years. It's an expensive process, but essentially, your, your book, your code of ordinance is kind of your rulebook. And that's what keeps, you know, your building permits, everything else kind of in order. So it doesn't, you're looking at a complete recodification, ten months. So we're also looking at a comprehensive plan, which some of the ordinances, the comprehensive plan aren't gonna change. There's, there's, it's about fifty-fifty, half of them aren't even gonna change. I mean, they won't, they won't change, context won't change with the comprehensive plan. So if you wait, if you, if you opt to wait, then you're, you're essentially looking at, this, this process won't be complete for another two years, because you've got a year for the comprehensive plan and ten months for the recodification. So I mean, it's just, it's whatever timeframe you're comfortable with. We've been talking about it for a while, we started addressing it a year and a half, maybe two years ago.
Two years ago.
When we started, when we did our strategic plan with Ron Cox, and I'm even going through and looking at some of like the foundational ordinances of the city. There were some things that he identified recodification should be talked on our priority list. So we've been talking about it for a while.
So if we were, if we go ahead and do it now, when we are moving forward with the comprehensive plan and changes, it's not gonna cost more money.
No.
Because we have changes that we're making due to the plan.
So that's one beneficial thing about Franklin, is they have unlimited changes. Because some cities will sit stagnant for two or three years and then do what we're doing, strategic for comprehensive plan, and there's, there's, there's a huge effect all at one time. They do not charge, it's unlimited updates, it's part of the recodification process. Whereas Munich Code, you're limited, you're limited to X amount of updates a year. And they say, give them eight to twelve months to do the update versus an hour. That's a big difference for us.
It makes sense to do them simultaneously, the comprehensive plan and this at the same time.
Other discussion?
With our new software that you guys are using for the agendas, is it gonna be intuitive, can these work together?
Yes.
Okay. So it'll be intuitive, like, okay, here you've got this plan coming up, oops, you gotta check this ordinance. Okay.
Yeah, because that was one thing Erica specifically asked, is do they interface and communicate? And the answer is yes. And, and it's not like we just Googled governmental legal review. I mean, these are, these are fully vetted companies that are used with counties and municipalities. And so basically, we took the top two, we interviewed them, we did demos, we looked at their sites, we compared pricing. Obviously, we have a history with Munich Code, so we're able to use that in kind of making this decision. We've been talking to Franklin for several years. When we first started talking to him, it was more just exploratory, because we had talked to him at a conference. Franklin is very involved with Erica's city municipal clerks organization. And a lot of cities do use Franklin, just because the owner of Franklin is so readily available. He offers free training, the, the update, that's really become a big thing, is this lag time with getting ordinances updated. The last time I, we updated several ordinances, I asked for a book, a new printed ordinance book, and it was like six hundred dollars.
From Munich Code.
From Munich Code. And that was from printed paper, they were charging us like a dollar for a piece of paper. Franklin, that's just included in their annual fee. You know, some cities like the old-fashioned paper, some people like the online. We like to have both, both options here.
Thank you. Alright. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll get that started. Okay, reports. A couple of things just to share. I had a suggestion this weekend from a constituent, a neighbor, to highlight tax rate explanation information that we presented in October and anything else that we have on our website. So it's easy for somebody to go and look at the tax rate, the bill that I just got, and some explanation and how will that work. So we're gonna take those items that are already on the site, but under that meeting, the PowerPoint presentation that we gave, I don't remember if it was the first or the second meeting, and anything else that we have, and we'll make something right on our landing page so that it's easy to find for a while. Let it have its turn right there front and center. If anybody else has other suggestions like that, we're always open. I wanna appeal to our residents and our neighbors, please reach out for a conversation with a question, with a suggestion, if you have an idea, if you just wanna know if something you heard is true or false, please reach out. I'm posting on social media from my personal page, we have all of our contact information here to see on our website and on our social media pages. We really mean it, we really would love to talk with everybody about whatever it is that you'd like to bring up, or something that you've noticed, or if you have questions about, you know, what you hear online, or what you find on Google is not always true, whether it's WebMD or something else. So if you have questions, we'd love to hear about that. We're always open. Just an update, there's not anything to share at this point, but there's another late version of the drawings of the ten ninety-three and fourteen eighty-nine intersection that is being reviewed by Fort Bend County now, with the roundabout, not a roundabout, dog bone, just some various things. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, there'll be more information to share about that. It's looking still with very, very preliminary at this stage, but that our portion of that would be potentially about a million dollars. So we've mentioned that previously, thought I'd give you an update, that's all I know at this stage. Don't forget that the Simonton roundup is this weekend, right next to Anthony's, under the Big Top. We'll have vendors there, and crawfish, fun things for the kids to do. So please bring out the family and send your friends. And last reminder, oh, sorry, I got two reminders. One, early voting starts on the twenty-fourth, and it'll run from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth at Fulcher High School, from seven to seven. There's early voting on the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, first, and second. So plenty of opportunity to go out there. I think there's school board information, but also our local election. And last thing tomorrow night is the candidate forum, being hosted by the Fulcher Katie Chamber, right over here at elementary school across from Weston Lakes. So we can't ever say that it wasn't near enough to us to go and see what our candidates would like to offer, or what they have to say. So I encourage everybody to get there and bring in neighbors. Ms. Jennifer, you have any reports?
Hi, Millie, I just, this is the last meeting where we'll potentially have three of our sitting councilmen and women. So I just wanna take the opportunity to say, thank you for your service to the City of Simonton. I can't, I can't express what it means to have people who just selflessly give to the city. As y'all know, I've been in government for a long time, pretty close to twenty years. I can honestly say y'all have been an amazing council to work with. We haven't always agreed on stuff, but it's not my job to tell you how to vote. It's my job to provide you with the information, the education that you need to make, an educated vote. I was talking to Lori today, and I just wanted to bring this up, that it's, it's very easy to sit in council out here, and it's very easy to throw stones. And for the last eight months, it's been tough on us, it's been tough on council. We've been harassed, we've been slandered, we've had our character and our integrity questioned. We have, I've had people post where my children go to school. I've had people say they wanna come and burn my house down, because I told council to raise the tax rate. And I just wanna say, it's very easy to sit out here and throw stones at somebody and at council because of a decision they made. But almost twenty years ago, I had a city manager who told me after an irate citizen came to a city council meeting and got onto our mayor about a decision, a selfless decision that they'd made for council, and he said, you know, JJ, hurt people, hurt people. And I just wanna remind all of you that settle in council, I appreciate the time and the effort that y'all have given. Stacey has sat up here with me and Lori, working a flood with a two-week-old baby, pumping in between FEMA meetings, having her in a bassinet in my office.
My granddaughter.
Um, it's not fun, but we show up every single day.
When she was a baby.
After being berated the day before. And we show up with a smile on our face, through the job that we've been trained and we've been educated to do. And so I thank each of you for your service. Um, we appreciate your time, and we appreciate the fact that you love the City of Simonton. And that's, these days, is very rare to find.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, JJ.
Um, counsel, any updates or reports?
Uh, hope to see you out there tomorrow. It's, uh, it'll be, uh, it'll be great to see how, what everybody thinks and, um, once again, at the end of the, at the end of the day, if I'm not reelected, I, it has been a pleasure for the most part. But, uh, it's been an honor to serve the community that I'm gonna be loved.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I, um, I could add that it's exciting to see, having volunteered for the city for a very long time in several positions, it actually is exciting to see interested people wanting to participate and wanting to be involved. Um, so I think I'm looking forward to that. Um, it's nice to, to see new faces and people wanting to be involved. And it's been an honor for me to serve in the positions that I have served in, city management and, um, and now council stuff.
Same, appreciate everything, um, shoot from the, what is it called, I drew a blank. ELC, to being here, working with everybody. Appreciate it. Um, like I said, we moved here ten years ago, almost. And everybody was so nice, so, yeah, it's been pretty cool. Enjoyed it. Um, the first flood, you know, fell bad, 'cause everybody was volunteering, and I was like, crap, man, I'm moving to work, so. Bought everybody pizza, but ever since then, tried to do my part, so, yeah, appreciate everything. And I said, oh, who's cooking crawfish too?
Roberto.
Tomorrow Roberto's, I think there might be a Boudreaux helper.
Oh.
All right. Uh, any other city, um, reports or comments, or counsel or me?
I don't know if this is a good time to talk or not.
It's a little out of our ordinary.
Is it? Okay, that's fine.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know, uh, is, is there any way to get the city to adopt a noise ordinance? We've been having a lot of problems close to where we live, not only with a business that's operating in the City of Simonton, at a house that shouldn't be, but the noise that comes from two separate locations that affect everybody in that area.
I, I can say, since it's not on the agenda, we would be happy to work with you on that, it's a great idea, and let's spend it out and see how we can.
I didn't know how, how to do it.
Yeah, you could, they can't respond, I, I can respond. So technically, counsel can't respond, but I can. Um, so it is not uncommon for cities to have noise ordinances, and I, I feel for the situation that y'all are in. Um, I don't really do Facebook a whole lot, so Erica has kind of kept me up to date with what's going on. And remember, Facebook isn't an official site to report, but if you could please, just please, I know you've been kind of feeding us that, that'd be great, and just continue calling the constable's office. Um, we have had conversations with, um, Constable Norvell about it, and he's very aware. Um, in terms of a sound ordinance, it's very difficult for a city to have a sound ordinance when you don't have internal police. Because who's gonna go out there and actually met, like, measure the, it's, it, there's a decimal reader, it's about this big, that they. Um, so it's very hard for us to, I mean, I'm sure Lori and Erica and I would love to come out at, like, two o'clock.
We offered to buy a decimal reader.
Right, and so we've talked to Chad about possibly, you know, going into some sort of internal local agreement with them and providing that, whatever that might look like, I don't know. Um, I don't have a definite answer, but we're definitely working on it, and we've had communications about it. So in the meantime, I just encourage you to keep calling in, because the more you call in, the more it's logged, and my police can correct me if I'm wrong. The more it's logged, and then it, they realize every time it pops up, like, it's, it's been an issue.
I'll only add one little thing to that. There's a difference between calling in and depending upon what night of the week you call in, you get Sheriff's Department or Constable's Department. Constable's Department usually responds with, sure, we'll send somebody out. Sometimes Sheriff's Department does, sometimes Sheriff's Department says, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do, in kind of a not so nice way.
Correct.
It's super frustrating, and it's kind of a, oh, well, and then nobody comes. So, whereas one office or, you know, the constable's office might understand and, and maybe try to do something, or at least knock on a door and say, can you keep it down? They don't all.
Right.
And, and also the operators don't know.
And we can, we can kind of circle up a few weeks this week, and we can kind of game plan, and we'll be in touch with, um, Chad Norvell as well, to see what we can, how we can kind of, it's just, it's, a lot of cities do have noise, uh, noise ordinance. It's just very hard for a city that doesn't have like an internal, you know, police force to go out there and just continually monitor it, so.
I'm gonna piggyback onto her question, is it against a lot of shootguns at night?
No, it depends.
'Cause when I looked it up on the internet, it said, uh, that you can't do hunting at night, gun hunting at night.
It depends, it's, uh, I mean, I'll, I can talk to you about it afterwards, because there are some ifs, ands, and buts about it, yeah. So the answer's yes and no.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks everybody for coming, it is time to adjourn. I have seven twelve.